Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Today is Monday, June 16th. We are on the third floor, multipurpose room, Bennington Fire Facility, 130 River Street in Bennington. My name is Tom Haley and I have the honor of chairing this board. And I will ask my fellow board members, as always, to introduce themselves, starting with Nancy.
Hi, I'm Nancy White.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Hi, Jim Sullivan.
Good evening, Jackie Matts.
Yes, good evening, Clark Adams.
I'm Ed Woods.
Also with us this evening is Dan Monks, Assistant Town Manager. We have Jonah Spivak, our communications coordinator, who I believe is handling probably the audio visual for us this evening. We have Nancy Lively, who is preparing to take some excellent minutes. And we have Josh Pouchet from Cat TV. All right.
Tom, it's July 14th, I believe. You said June 16th.
That's because I was looking at the minutes of June 16th when I said that. Thanks for the correction on that. Okay, very good. We'll begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And Ed, would you also read our vision statement, which guides our work?
I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right. On the consent agenda, we have the minutes of June 16th, 23rd, 25th, and July 2nd. We had members absent at each meeting on the 16th, 23rd, and 25th, so I'll have to take those individually. So could I have a motion to accept the minutes from the water budget meeting on June 16th?
Motion to accept June 16th minutes.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on those minutes? All right. All those in favor of accepting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I should have one abstention?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the minutes from the meeting on June 23rd. Could I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Nancy?
I wasn't here, so I'll have to abstain.
Right.
Okay, anything else? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Nancy. Okay. Moving right along to June 25th, which was the listening session. Could I have a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on those minutes? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And?
I'm your abstention there. I was absent.
All right. Now we'll have the minutes from the meeting of July 2nd. Could I have a motion to accept those and the warrants, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
I have two questions on the warrants.
Okay, Jackie.
So I see on page one of three on the warrant report number 26, Adams Lock and Security for keypad repairs. Is that for the handicap button outside the door here?
I don't think we had keypad repairs there. Let me just see what account number that is. Give you an idea. It's 4170. So that was at the police, that was the police building.
Okay. And then, page one of two on warrant report number one, or the FY 26 prepaid warrant, there's a large payment to VLCT passive. That's the liability insurance for the town.
Property insurance liability, yes. So that's our insurance carrier.
So that's sort of to cover us from lawsuits and liability and things like that?
As well as property damage, et cetera. Passive covers is our insurance carrier for all those items.
Oh, great.
Property casualty loss, et cetera, liability.
Thank you.
Clark?
Again, on page one of three, item number 403550, mowing locations. Is that general like that?
So that particular contractor, we contract out to do mowing in various locations around town. Some of our pathways, other locations such as that. I couldn't give you an exhaustive list, but we do contract out some of our mowing.
I just have a recreational area.
Yep, yes, yes.
Willow Park, do you mow that?
No, I think Willow Park, we do most of that ourselves. But there are some trails that wreck paths that are mowed by Calvert, et cetera. Yep. Like the Morgan, like the Headwaters Park, et cetera.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes and the warrants, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? All right.
Excuse me, one question.
Yep.
Last month, we had a special meeting here on June 3rd. I don't think the minutes have come in front of us to get approved yet.
That is correct. Nancy, are you still working on those?
No.
She only takes excellent minutes.
They're already posted on the webpage, so.
So they were in.
Okay.
So you don't think they were?
They're not in the packet. So could you make a note so we can get those next time, please?
Sure. And just so you know, new state law requires us to post minutes even before they get approved.
Right. All right. Okay, next up, we have public comment. Where's my little spiel? Remind everyone that public comment is a period for sharing information that is for the good of all on items that are not on the agenda. It is not a time for back and forth, questions and answers. If you do have a question that we're able to provide a short answer to, we will do so at the end of the public comment period. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less and state your legal name and town of residence. So we'll start first with Erin Williams, Bennington County Multicultural Community Center event announcement.
Good evening. Erin Williams, Bennington, Vermont. And I'm here in my role at the Bennington County Multicultural Community Center to announce that the multicultural center will make its debut at Midnight Madness this year, which is, in case, no one knows, this Thursday, July 17th. This is really exciting. We're super, super thrilled to be participating in this beloved Bennington tradition. Our Midnight Madness hours will overlap with our regular hours, so beginning at 3:00 PM, we will have our activities outdoors, and anyone is welcome to stop by inside. And we will be open until 9:00 PM. I'm very sorry to disappoint, we will not be open until midnight, but we will be open until 9:00 PM. We will have a table on Main Street with staff from the center directing people back to Union Street, which is where the entrance to the center is, where our office will be open. The public is welcome to come in and view our language learning center collection, participate in some fun art activities and games. And the star of the show will be our produce stand that will be stocked with pay-by-donation produce from all of our various community gardening locations. So again, we will be at Midnight Madness from 3:00 to 9:00 PM this Thursday, and we're very excited about it. The second announcement I have for the multicultural community center is that we would like the Bennington community to save the dates for our Film and Food Festival that will be this summer and fall. This event is made possible by Vermont Humanities. We're really excited to host a series of film screenings in August, September, and October. And these films will highlight the nationalities of the three largest populations with whom we work. So there will be a film from Afghanistan, the Democratic Republic of Congo, and Venezuela. And then there will be cultural food from each nation available, pay-by-donation at the screening. And there will also be some sort of discussion or presentation that is facilitated by an individual from this nationality who is here in our community. So there will be more specific details to come, closer to each of the events with dates. Promotion will begin at the end of the month, in early August. And we're also really grateful to the Bennington Theater for working with us to host each of these film screenings. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Erin. Mary Morrissey, does it say information request?
Mary Morrissey, Bennington. I hope you can hear me. It's my allergies, forgive me. I respectfully asking the board, how do I get, this is now the fourth time I'll be asking for several documents in regards to the Ben High. Our town manager, Stuart Hurd, said at the last meeting that he would get me the documents I asked for. They're basic documents that I have not been able to get. I got one document before or right after our town manager went on vacation, which was all acronyms, which is fine. Some of them I know, but some of them I don't. My concern is that I then went to our assistant town manager, who probably not so nicely told me that, you know, these are the only documents. I had to several times ask him to, please not be yelling at me. And, you know, I was sorry for that, you know, because I wasn't asking for anything out of the ordinary. I've also been contacted by Zach Hale, and we've gone back and forth a couple of times. And I sent him some questions that he said, you know, he would be happy to answer anything that I was requesting. And I sent that over a week ago, and I'm yet to hear anything back. And so, as a board, who do I go to? We're always told to go to the town office to get information, and that's been a pretty tough situation as to getting it. So are there any suggestions? I know we can't have a back and forth, but what are my options here?
We'll circle back to this at the end of public comment, Mary, but thank you for that, and I will, if we could talk, are you going to be staying for the whole meeting, or could we talk tomorrow, perhaps?
I can't stay for the whole meeting.
Okay. I'll reach out to you tomorrow, and whatever questions we can't answer at the end of public comment here, I'll try to find out for you.
Thank you.
Erin Williams, for the Bennington Community Cafe.
Erin Williams, Bennington, Vermont. I'm here to talk about the Bennington Community Cafe. So, for the last two weeks, not this most recent Saturday, but the Saturday after the Fourth, July 5th, and the Saturday before that, the Bennington Community Cafe had moved back to our original location at GBIX for two weeks of super fun outside cookouts. And those went really well. That was really, really cool, and it was great to be outside at GBIX. There was some fun sidewalk chalk art, among other things. We had the grill going, everybody had a great time. And this past Saturday, we did move back inside to our current permanent location, which is at St. Peters, 200 Pleasant Street. And I am here to just remind the community that regardless of where we are located, that the Community Cafe is every Saturday from 1:30 to 3:00 PM, and truly, the entire community is welcome. We would love especially if families with younger children, if some independent teenagers are feeling like they don't have anything to do on the weekend, please come and hang out with us. You do not need to let us know ahead of time. You do not have to come volunteer, but I'm going to talk about that in a second. You can truly come and have some really great homemade food, listen to some music. If you play music, please come and play music with us, come make some art. It's just a really great space for anybody, regardless of who they are or what they believe in, to come and enjoy the community. Also, we would love for you to volunteer, especially anybody who is comfortable working in a kitchen, or maybe is interested in learning how to do that and would like some volunteer experience. We are always welcoming additional volunteers during our session on Saturdays, or looking for people to cook throughout the week, or however you want to work that out. Please reach out to us at benningtoncommunitycafe@gmail.com. Or we have a Facebook page and Instagram. We are the same on both of those websites. It is Bennington Community Cafe. It's pretty easy to find us. Our logo is a very cute, hand-drawn coffee cup. Yeah. And in general, it's just really nice to have such a diverse and welcoming group of individuals who get together every day, regardless of what their day job is or what they do. It's just really nice, once a week, to have this group of people who, maybe they work for state services, maybe they work for a different organization within the community, but they're truly just there as themselves to have a really nice time. So please come see us at the cafe.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mike Bethel on various subjects.
Mike Bethel, Bennington. There's a couple of things. One, I'm very disappointed the way this board treated Kelly Carroll, the Chair of the C-PAR. I thought that was really wrong to do it. She put a lot of heart and soul into that board, and she's put a lot of heart and soul into Bennington. And to just slough her off like that, I thought was pretty rude and a pretty low-class thing to do, to be honest with you. The other thing I want to know is, who owns the Ben High right now? You can answer that one, Tom. We talked about it yesterday.
Mike, you know, we take any questions, any answers at the end of the comment.
Do I have to back up to talk after you give the answer?
What's that? No, that's why we don't do a back and forth.
You tell me if I'm wrong, okay? Cornerstone now owns Ben High. Am I right or wrong? Up, down, just do like this. Doesn't take a lot of effort, Tom.
As Zach actually, I'll make an exception right now, but I'm not going to go back and forth with you, Mike. As Zach indicated at our last meeting, there's an organization that calls Ben High Cornerstone that owns Ben High. Am I correct on that, Dan?
So they own it, they've had, it has to be a nonprofit that owns it, correct, Dan?
Again, Michael, we're not doing a back and forth.
I'll educate the public. It has to be a nonprofit that owns it, and that's why they swung in Cornerstone. Zach Hale could never have owned this piece of property. And I don't know when you geniuses discovered this or not, but I hope that it doesn't put this town's ARPA money in jeopardy, because you people also could be in jeopardy. Your insurance policy on what you do and what you decide only goes so far. And right now, this thing is a mess, as far as I'm concerned. Zach Hale doesn't have the money, nor the experience to do a project like this, I don't believe, in my opinion. And you had to drag in Cornerstone to show that you, the banks, the lenders, whatever nonprofit stuff that they got, that Mr. Monks and Ms. Bisardi got, I believe they got it prematurely without having a nonprofit in place. And the banks might have thought that the town of Bennington was the nonprofit. And again, I could be wrong, but since you people never answer anything, or never hold a new meeting about the new information on Ben High, how does anybody know? So I hope you'll answer and just tell that, yes, Cornerstone owns Ben High. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have Jenny Dewer on the Blueberry Festival.
Hi, Jenny Dewer. I live in Pownell. I'm here on behalf of the Apple Barn, even though I do not work for the Apple Barn, and I think you people are lovely. Blueberries, community, and this is written by Sarah Albright, who is the owner of the Apple Barn. Blueberries, community in Vermont charm the third annual Blueberry Festival at the Apple Barn and Bake Shop. In a time when the world feels overwhelming, there's something deeply grounding about gathering together in celebration of local food, farming, and community. That's exactly what we're doing at the Apple Barn and Bake Shop's third annual Blueberry Festival, happening Saturday, July 19th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's this Saturday. This year's festival is a joyful reminder of the values that make Vermont so special: hard-working farmers, passionate makers, small-town traditions, and neighbors coming together. We invite you to join us for a day that celebrates all of this, and of course, blueberries. The festival kicks off with free, 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 blueberry picking in the fields behind the barn. Families can also enjoy a kid-friendly scavenger hunt, outdoor games, and plenty of fun across the property. We'll be firing up the grill at our Apple Barn concession stand, serving homemade barbecue and other delicious eats, including authentic Mexican food offered up by Letty's Mexican. Plus, you'll find an incredible lineup of craft vendors and local artisans, offering everything from small-batch sweets to handmade goods, all rooted in Vermont creativity and care. Don't miss the Blueberry Bake Off, where local bakers go head-to-head to win $150, a year's supply of cider donuts, the best cider donuts, I might say, and bragging rights. I said that, not Sarah, about the best. Just, she's humble. We're still welcoming participants, so if you've got a treasured blueberry recipe, this is your moment. Entries must be submitted by 12:00 PM on the day of the festival, and the winner announced at 4:00 PM. There will also be sampling inside the store, special blueberry features throughout the day, and the kind of genuine homespun hospitality that has defined the Apple Barn for generations. Overflow parking will be available at the Bennington County Sheriff's Department, with complimentary shuttle service provided by Dufour Busing. Whether you're a blueberry enthusiast, a proud Vermonter, or just someone who's looking for a good reason to smile, this festival is for you. Come out and celebrate what makes this corner of the world so sweet. The Apple Barn is located at 604 US Route 7 South, and this event is free and open to the public. If you want more information, or you want to enter the Blueberry Bake Off ahead of time, you can email sarahalbright@theappelbarnvermont@gmail.com. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
And now we have Bridget Elder on the River Walk.
Good evening, Bridget Elder, as aforementioned, of Bennington. We hope people can join us July 19th to celebrate Jerry Albert. The walk will begin at 9:00 AM, at the Rotary Bennington Station Park on Depot Street, between Main Street and River Street. We'll meet in the parking lot behind MSK Engineering and proceed along the River Walk to Park Street, stopping by the Walloomseck Apartments at the Memorial of Emily Hammond to present the Unsung Hero Award. For those with limited mobility, the presentation area can be accessed by the Bank of Bennington Parking Lot. Following the presentation of the Unsung Hero, we will walk to the VFW Post, 1132, at 133 North Street, for light refreshments and to hear about their vital role in the community. Thanks. Hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that did not have the opportunity to sign up that wishes to speak? All right. Dan, did you see anything in there that you can add anything to?
I'll just respond that, since I had not, since the last time I spoke into Representative Morrissey, she had indicated that she would speak to Zach Hale. I had not heard anything back from the representative, so I assumed that she had gotten the information she had hoped to get. Zach did say he reached out several times to Mary, and I assumed they finally did connect, but that would be the best bet for information, but if she'd like to meet with you, and maybe she can articulate more clearly what she's looking for.
May I?
Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to very briefly respond to Mike Bethel's concerns about Cornerstone, or Ben High Cornerstone, more specifically. My understanding from listening to the presentation by Zach Hale at a recent meeting is that Ben High Cornerstone is an independent nonprofit organization established to aid in the assistance with the development of the Ben High Project, the project which is really under the full control of Hale Resources. And he urged us not to confuse Ben High Cornerstone with Cornerstone Housing Partners, which is an entirely separate and distinct nonprofit organization.
Thank you, Jim, for saying that, so we didn't have to. Sarah? He got it. Jackie?
I just wanted to follow up on the request that I made June 23rd, that the webpage on the town website was updated. I'd love to recommend that as a resource for people that are looking for information. I checked this afternoon, and the FAQ section still says that Hale Properties LLC will be the owner of the Havana High Building. So I don't feel comfortable sending people to that page, knowing that some of that information's still out of date.
Thank you for catching that on the FAQ. I had missed that, but at the very top of the page, it had an update, including the presentation of Zach Hale, with a link both to the slide deck that was provided with the latest information on the funding stack, as well as the ownership, as well as a link to the video presentation they had done in Montpelier. But thank you for catching that down in the FAQ. That is at the bottom, and I apologize, I did miss that, so I'll take care of that right away.
Thank you.
Tom?
Nancy? I would ask that changes not be made, because so many changes have been made over the past couple of years, it's important for people to understand, this is why it's been so confusing. Last month, I attended the meeting that Cornerstone Housing had at their office on North Street. I invited the CEO to one of our meetings this month. She said she would be here, so hopefully she will be here at our next meeting. I would hope we could have other people here to answer questions about the Ben High. Every place I'm going, I have people asking me questions. A lot of information that's been coming out in May and June, people were saying, why didn't I know this ahead of time? So I really think we need to clear up a lot of the confusion that the public is having.
And Ed?
This is just a reiteration of what Jim Sullivan said a few minutes ago. Cornerstone Housing Partners and Cornerstone Ben High are not the same organization, so invite inviting a CEO from Bennington, from Cornerstone Partners would be great, but that's not where any information is going to come from regarding the Ben High Project. I think we are continuing to confuse the public. And to Jackie's point, I certainly think that anything that references outdated information caught in a quick search, I'm sure, as it was being updated, needs to be updated. So let's not hold any information on the website that's outdated, please. Thank you.
Well, I have to add, having gone to the meeting, and it was advertised in the paper ahead of time, they were there to talk about the services they're going to be offering. They never existed until January. They said they are going to be managing at the Ben High. I have to look and see who is the partnering, partners with Ben High Cornerstone, to see if they were part of the project, if they existed before January. And also, the night of the meeting, I'm surprised nobody brought it up at the last meeting. One of the officials said earlier that day, "A group of officials met, talked about housing, looked at different properties in Bennington, and Tom had been part of the group." I knew nothing about the meeting. Somebody posted a photo online, it looked like about 20 officials were there. I don't know how many people from the Select Board were there. Obviously, we all couldn't be there, we would have violated open meeting law, so I think the people of Bennington, and those of us who weren't there, should know what were the properties people looked at, what did these 20 or so officials talk about during the day. They must have talked about the Ben High.
Tom, I won't drag that on, I just want to respond again by saying there are two very different, distinct, separate organizations.
Right. And I can't go into, I can't, just for the sake of time, go into everything we talked about at that meeting, but primarily, we're getting some briefings on some things coming down from the state with some changes in the law.
But why was this not a publicly-worn Select Board meeting? So we all could have been there.
This was not our meeting. This was not my meeting. This was not a meeting that I called, this was a meeting that I was invited to by someone else.
But how many people from the Select Board were there?
I was there, Jim was there.
I was there, and we all could have attended without violating open meeting law, since it was another meeting put on by another entity.
So you didn't talk about the Ben High, and you didn't go to the Ben High?
I did not visit the Ben High that day, no.
Nobody went to the Ben High?
I don't know what anybody else from that group did that day.
Point of order, please.
But yeah, we are getting off subject.
Let's get back, please, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Can you clarify a question? Who owns the Ben High?
Ben High Cornerstone is the entity that owns the Ben High, but not Cornerstone Housing. Ben High Cornerstone is the organization that owns the Ben High. Moving on, we were ahead of schedule. Just briefly. Item number five, we need to set the municipal tax rates. So leading that conversation will be Dan Monks and Melissa Courier.
Okay. I'm just going to read from Melissa's memo. It's just so clearly identified the tax rates that need to be adopted. After the completion of the grant list by our Board of Listers, Melissa has analyzed that and the budget, and is recommending the following tax rates for the coming year. For the general fund, 0.9838; for the highway fund, 0.5331; and for the fire fund, 0.0938. That's for a total tax rate of 1.6107. I will note that that increase is slightly less than what Stuart Hurd had projected. And sometimes I wonder how he's able to do these things, but I'm sure Melissa had a lot to do with that, too. But, so we came in right where we'd hoped to come in, and that, those are the tax rates that we are recommending that the Select Board approve, based on the grant list and the budget passed. Do you have anything to add, Melissa, or is that accurate? Good enough? Okay. Questions?
All right, any questions from the board?
I have one. Dan, I don't know if this, for the ease of everyone's understanding here, can you tell the public the impact on the per hundred thousand, or per thousand, some reference for?
Sure. That's very, very, I know that question always comes up, and Melissa proactively took care of that for me, so thank you. For each hundred thousand of assessed value, the increase, annual increase, would be $93.50 or $7.79 per month. And that is the impact of the increase in tax.
Municipal tax.
For each 100,000. Yep.
Total tax, correct?
Not education, yes. For the portion of the municipality controls, absolutely. We don't, I don't think we know yet exactly what the education impacts.
We're talking about the items, the three items combined here, that's the impact to the average property owner.
Absolutely, no. We, yeah, we have no control over the education tax, so.
Got it.
Anything from the public? All right, then we shall call the vote. All in favor of setting the tax?
Do you need a motion?
Oh, yeah, we need a motion. A motion to accept the tax rates described.
This is the budget the Board approved. I checked the math, the math is right, so I move to approve these tax rates.
Thank you, Jackie, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Any abstentions? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, I think, there he is. All right, next up, we have a presentation on the North Bennington Outdoor Sculpture Show, otherwise known as N-Boss, and Public Art in Bennington. Ahmad Yassir will be joining us and leading us this evening of this conversation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ahmad, and I would like to present to you guys today on N-Boss and public art in Bennington in general. I just feel like something that existed for the past 28 years. I don't feel like anyone brought it to you guys, or to anyone in previous Select Board. So this is kind of a good time. So to kind of start a little bit, how many, how many people here in this small room have been to any of the North Bennington sculpture shows? Amazing, beautiful. So, a little bit about me, just for it all, to make a little bit of sense, and it's also because I obviously wear too many hats in this town, it will be helpful to a bit tell you about myself, I guess. So I came to Bennington College, graduated in the class of 2020, and I stayed since then. My concentrations were in visual arts and public policy. I currently work at Vermont News &amp; Media as their marketing person, promoting the banner Journal Reformer, and all of our local clients. And I'm also the editor for Vermont Country Magazine, our bi, sorry, our bi-monthly tourism platform, and Green Mountain, which is the only news outlet covering all of cannabis news in the state. My additional marketing work includes working with Jonah and Chenon on Vermont Begins Here, and working with the Chamber on Garlic Town. I'm also a board member of the Southwest Vermont Chamber of Commerce, the Better Bennington Corporation, and Head Start. I'm also on the Vermont Humanities Grant Giving Committee. And very recently, I became the N-Boss Director. So to tell you a little bit about N-Boss, I started becoming affiliated three years ago. So I've been involved with leadership in the shadows and in the backend. One of the first things that I did was making the application online and live, and more inclusive to recruit artists from all over the area. To tell you a little bit about the show, it started in 1997, when a Bennington College graduate had a lot of sculptures laying around. And together with Joel McGovern, who's still involved with the show, they started N-Boss in 1997. And it continues to, today, to be a free accessible art show, on display from June through November, seven days a week. And when I first started, it primarily involved around North Bennington install sites, Bennington Museum got added, and for the second year now, Downtown is involved through the partnership with the Better Bennington Corporation. And I would say, as many times, we want to write missions and visions and all of that, it's truly about celebrating democracy in arts, allowing anyone to experience sculpture without gallery walls or admission fees. A lot of the people that have anxiety around taking a bunch of kids into a small gallery space, or everything that has to do with art being high-end or not-high-end, when it's on the streets, it's accessible to everyone to enjoy it. And we've been seeing the involvement that comes from the South Shire Community School, the Village School of North Bennington, the Vermont Arts Exchange, summer camps, and truly, it gets involved into local schools' curriculums and way more. So currently, the sites are adding up. Currently, we have Main Street, North Bennington, the Vermont Arts Exchange Campus, the museum, Welling Townhouse, the North Bennington Train Station, the Highland Hall Gardens, the Aldrich Yard, next to the, you know, the Charlie Jackson Home in North Bennington, and as of recently, the Downtown Bennington River Walk. So to kind of tell you a little bit about the backend of it all, that although this is, like, seen to the public, seen to us locals, as a one-day event, but it is actually an all-year-round type of work towards this show. So the online application opens, since it started three years ago, on January 1st, until April 15th. When the application's open, we post it in as many different platforms possible, again, to, in an indirect way, promote Bennington area as a whole, to a whole other audience. When it comes to open calls to art, when it comes to everything, a lot of people are becoming more and more familiar with our area, just because we're giving them this opportunity to exhibit in our area. So in the second phase, that's when I start reaching out to the existing sites, and try to get new ones, to add up the amount of public art in Bennington. During that period, as of recently, also, this was the first year that there was outreach for business sponsorships and donations. Like you guys know, this has been 28 years of volunteers putting it together. It's not that one morning we wake up and sculptures come up from the grass. It's the work of a lot of volunteers that, one, maintain this brand for 28 years, two, continue to do the work on the field. So introducing things like business sponsorships this year have been hugely helpful, because the leadership is, we're all aging out. We cannot rely on a few people to help with the install of the sculptures, help 60 people install their work. So we had to pay someone this year, which is great. I mean, a lot of the problems that the show has were solved this year by being able to raise some money and actually pay people to do the work. And then on April 15th is the deadline, right after, the curators from all different sites, so we had Mike McDonough representing the BBC, Jamie representing the Bennington Museum, Joe, the curator for North Bennington, to kind of cite where each piece is going. And then we have the opening reception, and just so you guys know, it's always on the last Saturday in June. And then in November, all of the work has to go away. So in super short, we borrow an X amount of sculptures every year as a really huge purpose and reason to promote the area and make it more of an attraction. We borrow them from June to November, some of them get sold, some of them go back to the artists. The opening reception, I would say, is the most local, public-facing avenue. And I feel like that's mostly why N-Boss hasn't been, like, as relevant to our local community, because it truly seems as a one-day event, and not really a whole production, because the opening reception is the most public-facing part of the show. So a part of it, you know, traditional, free hot dogs by Kevin, from Kevin's, if you remember, a lot of opportunities to meet with the artists and network. There's always free live music. This year, there were kids' activities at the VAE Art Plus. So it's one big community celebration of our artists, our art, our region as a vibrant art community. Let's put some money into it. So if you want to count into it what comes into Bennington every year, this is the value of the art that we're bringing. So you truly have a couple of volunteers reaching out to recruit over, almost 60 artists that are bringing a value of art. No one is spending this money at all. This is the value that they're bringing us. So North Bennington this year has over 160,000 in value. Bennington Museum has over 100,000, and Downtown River Walk is a bit over 40,000. North Bennington for this year, since it was a transitional year, it had 34 artists, the Bennington Museum around 24, and the River Walk has eight. And this is the piece that I love the most, is looking who this show is actually getting to. Our artists are coming from 50 towns across 10 states. So you have randomly, like, truly randomly, if you look at it, each one of these places have someone that is currently telling everyone, "Yo, my piece is in North Bennington, yo, my piece is in Bennington. You should go up to Southwest Vermont, they have sculpture gardens and sculptures on display that you can enjoy at any time." So this, for me, is one of the best product placements of how can we have as many ambassadors outside of our area actually promoting our area, and giving their people more than one reason to visit? A lot of promotions goes into it. After all, we're not offering the artists stipends. We're not giving anyone money, honestly. I made this joke this year, that truly, Max Ferry, our install assistant, is the person to get the richest ever off of N-Boss, because he had his stipend for one week to help install the sculptures. So a lot of promotions has to go into it, whether to promote each individual artist, the show as a whole, keep the integrity of promoting this as a brand associated with our region. So way, way too much work goes into it on a promotion end, from the first campaign to promote the artists' applications, to the second campaign promoting the opening reception, to the third campaign promoting the fact that it's up from June to November. And this is, again, a whole other audience that is interested in public art as a way to support all of our businesses and our region as a whole. Just the opening reception itself, when you have people coming from all of these different areas, most of them are either staying for the week, or for the weekend. The week if they're installing, or the weekend if they just want to show up to the opening reception, and they bring all their people with them. To add a little bit more of online numbers, this is mostly monthly. So on a monthly basis, the website has an average of almost 9,000 people going there to look at sculptures, look at artists, and then organically learning more about our area. When it comes to the social campaigns, we have over 60,000 reach between all of these different campaigns. And one of my favorite introductions is something that is super specific, which is how many people look up "public art" on Google, find that, and then plug directions? So we, on paper, can guarantee an average of 150 people that are seeking public art. And when they click "directions," I get the number by the end of the month. When it comes to its funding, it's honestly, surprisingly, ridiculously weird how, because it's volunteer-based, that we can do this whole thing with $7,000. Between the stipends, between the promotional work, between the signage, between everything that we need to do, it's only $7,000. But this is not going to be sustainable, once more problems arise, more volunteers need to be replaced with paid people, and we had Joe for the past 13 years doing it as a volunteer. Now I'm starting to do it this year as my first year. I'm definitely not doing it for the next 13 years, and definitely not doing it as a volunteer. And same thing applies to future curators that are seeking stipends, artists that are going to seek higher prizes. So the kind of expenses, you can kind of see it, that our priority is promoting the artists and the program as a whole, and that is through direct support to them, and through the marketing and promotion of it all. When it comes to the income, when it comes to the income, most of it actually comes from one grant, based in North Bennington. And then the remaining has to do with either our community and site partners, this year was the first year we introduced business sponsorships, and individual donations for this year were limited to the opening reception only. So I would say that truly, for a group of volunteers, we were able to squeeze and do a bunch of cuts around that we still have money to give prizes to three artists, and we have a $1,000 surplus, besides everything that happened, and I'll tell you how we're going to spend it. And I'll tell you how we're going to spend it. So currently, NBOSS, and I should have put the NBOSS logo there to give it like its integrity also, because of its location, it's often perceived as an exclusive Vermont Arts Exchange function. It happens at their space. So I would say that the leadership team consists of the NBOSS volunteers, including me, Vermont Arts Exchange, the museum, and Highland Hall Gardens, who have been involved for five-plus years. When it comes to the site partners, we're really happy that we're working with the BBC now over having some sculptures at the Riverwalk, the Village of North Bennington, of course, and Bennington College. This year's business sponsors were, of course, the Fund for North Bennington, Pangia, who was actually our presenting sponsor, Bank of Bennington, and Williams Financial. And then when it comes to our media sponsors, of course, GVH with the signage, Cat TV with the documentation, and the banner with the promotion. And to kind of wrap this up, and truly, I'm just presenting to you guys, just so this is more of a relevant topic, just so this is more of something that the community as a whole is aware that is happening, and just to kind of put a face to it too. Because for the longest time, as you see, the target group isn't locals exclusively. So when it comes to promoting the artist's application, when it comes to promoting the event, it kind of goes beyond just our local residents because there are so many target audience being put forward when it comes to this type of work. So this is truly for the sake of telling the community as a whole, I do not have a direct ask right now, other than the fact of sharing what this thing is about, and that the next time we do a call for volunteers, it would be cool for more people to get involved. The next time we do a call for business sponsorships, more programs and businesses are ready to hop on board, but also to give it the sense that this is actually 28 years of a grassroots initiative. We all talk about how much we want to like work more with the college, involve the college students. This is something that was fully started by them. And because of the disconnect, let's call it, the next person to come from the college happened to be 28 years later. So some of the things that I'm really looking forward to bringing to NBOSS is actually incorporating it as an independent entity, and that's where the surplus from this year's budget is going to take place. This whole time, it's been honestly challenging, having to deal with multiple financial operating agents, multiple fiscal agents, different sites all at the same time, and also 60 artists that you have to communicate on individual basis. So it's entirely too much hurting to do. So hopefully, once it becomes an independent entity, that will help some of these challenges, basically. We've already selected a new curator for NBOSS 2026. We will announce it soon. Follow NBOSS VT to know who. Reintroducing the area, reintroducing the show to area college students. So we already solved that problem. They leave by the end of May. If they want to participate, apply using the application and install it before the end of May. You don't have to install it at the right, it's that simple. Expanding business sponsorships, fundraising, and general outreach, always necessary. Developing promotions across New England and art-specific platforms, so moving out of just the local and out of just the regional. How can we be more facing with the platforms and truly Arts New England, et cetera, et cetera? Increasing the artist's prizes, increasing the number of sites and sculptures, expanding the volunteer base, and hopefully, once there is much support around the finances and other stuff, we can actually start including larger-scale sculptures. We can start including specific artist residencies where we're recruiting very renowned people to actually produce work in the community. How nice would it be, an artist to come for a couple of weeks producing a sculpture would the communities help? That would be really cool. So there's a lot of, I mean, obviously, this is a very creative, volunteer-based group. And obviously, we're making this thing happen for the past 28 years with actual pennies. Imagine what would happen if there was just a little bit more support from people that are not doing it as their extracurricular activity? As much as, you know, all of the partners, sites, and sponsors dedicate really cool, amazing amount of volunteer hours towards this, but questioning the sustainability of it is always up in the air when you're not paying anyone to do this thing. And of course, like as we look further, NBOSS is excited to continue pushing the boundaries of public art, creating a show that connects Bennington's businesses, programs, and organizations while promoting it to a wider art world and tourists. And truly, like it takes a village, like this is truly, like I don't like taking credit for any of this, this is just me, but it's the whole community that actually comes together and helping to create this beautiful thing. Whether it's truly the person that watches the train station bathroom, to the person that makes sure no one takes the beer across the street, to the person that is selling the shirts, and to the person that is making art with the kids. There, and of course, like all of the artists that, again, they don't make any money off of this, whether they're full-time artists or artists doing it for the fun of it, no one guarantees making any money out of this. And this is mostly in response to, with the last thing that I said, is mostly in response to a few, you guys are familiar with them, a few social media skeptics and people that like to, you know, stab the thing in the wrong place or whatever their expression is, where they feel like this investment of, let's say, over $40,000 of sculptures being put in downtown, that that's being taken from tax money. That is so incorrect. We're literally borrowing the sculptures to create a free, accessible attraction to people. And for me, like as a person that is as involved in local and regional promotions and marketing, this is one of the best product placement, full-cycle marketing plans in order to promote the area. And it's only going to add up, it's only going to increase. This thing existing is what I believe probably encouraged other entities to do this work too. So obviously, when the museum had to get shut down for most of their programming during the pandemic, their solution was, let's work with NBOSS. When it comes to the BBC wanting to, wanting to basically address the fact that we don't have the Bennington Arts Council anymore, them producing the 2D barn quilt projects, adding up to the mural, I mean, you guys know, Jax mural projects. We are having a really cool uprising right now in the notion of public art, which obviously, with all of the numbers that I presented, is a need, is a demand, it's an attraction. People like it, people travel to see it. And when a lot of people from all over the New England area and even beyond, all the way to Chicago, are putting in an application to be a part of it, then we are organically increasing our online footprint, our tourism footprint, our art footprint as a vibrant art community, which is super helpful for all of us. And that's pretty much it. That's all I wanted to share. And if anyone has any questions, I'm here.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to the board first. Clark?
Very informative. As a relatively new Bennington resident, when we have our out-of-state visitors come here, they'll, we always take them over to North Bennington Station to see this, and I've heard nothing but great things. People are amazed that this little town has nice art on display. So anything that, you know, and they come from as far west as Chicago too, so.
Thank you, Clark.
Couple of comments, and maybe we'll find a couple of questions in here. First of all, let me say thank you for the way that you articulated this both verbally and illustratively. It was extremely well done. You talked about increasing or making its relevance more aware to the public, and this is a terrific way to do it. Couple of things that I picked out from your presentation were the number of artists and see how that number grew, but the data behind all of that and the year-over-year comps. If I could make one suggestion to you, that is, give more credit to the group for having grown 20 artists in this past year alone and for growing 23% year-over-year in site visits, because I think that's the proof, right? That means that what we're doing works. I want to mention a comment, the topic of volunteering, and it is so great to hear that an effort has taken on such a life that it now requires, if it's possible, the ability to pay staff because that's, listen, we've all been lugging this stuff for years, and it's really terrific that something grew to that. Let's remind the public that the way that this thing happened, did you say 28 years ago? Twenty, yeah. The way that happened was because people volunteered their time right up until right this minute. Let's not ever get away from that. That is so super important.
And to give a little visual, I'm 28 years old. So this show started when I was born.
I didn't remember seeing you there, and that could be why.
Anyone else?
I'll add that I was at the reception, it was a beautiful day, despite what the weather forecast said. Turnout was awesome. So we did get to tour the sculptures in North Bennington, many of which spoke to me, many of which didn't, but I'm sure the ones that didn't speak to me spoke to somebody else, which is what art is about. I've visited the sculptures on the Riverwalk, and those are all amazing, and it's wonderful to have the art downtown. It really does brighten up the area. I haven't gotten to the museum yet, but I promise I will. But I just, we can't emphasize enough the value that this is bringing, not only to North Bennington, because a lot of people forget that this isn't just North Bennington-centric anymore, that it is becoming, you know, something that's featured in both Bennington and North Bennington despite what the title says. And I think you guys have done a spectacular job at that in expanding the reach that this is going to do. And I'll say, you know, after we were done at the reception, we stopped in at Pangia. We were just going to have a drink real quick, and it was too busy. We just couldn't get to the bar, so we ended up going to another restaurant and having something to eat, and I'm sure that was the case for a lot of other people. So it is generating income beyond what, you know, just people going to look at the sculptures. There is bringing people into town that they're eating in the restaurants, staying in the hotels, which is a great thing. So thanks for all your work on that, it's amazing.
Correct. And I just want to add that, like, this is also, it's, the reason why I wanted the title of the presentation to be NBOSS and Public Art is to also give credit to everyone else that is doing similar work also, like whether it's the Bykub mural, whether it's, again, Olive Jack's projects. This is a rich, this is a very rich, talented community. And same thing, like when it comes to the mooses and the cats that are around, they also have as much value. This just happened to be my current passion project that I'm directing, and I love data, and I love to back up what I'm trying to say with actual numbers. I'm sure that when the moose project first started by the chamber, if some data point was connected to it, then we would have seen another side of its value other than, oh, these cute colorful things on Main Street and all around town. And I would say that this thing is only like going to grow, like not, whether through partnerships or anything else. So truly, one of the main reasons why I wanted to have this presentation, and again, reiterate the fact that this is a community grassroots project, is so the next time Mike McDonough is trying to talk to a downtown site about adding more public art downtown, they wouldn't give him such a hard time. The next time we're trying to do a call for volunteers, more people are down to support. The next, like, I'm really hoping that this whole brand can be taken over by Southwest students as well. Every semester, they can propose and work together on how can this brand evolve and change every year. So truly, this is just a call to put out all of the contact information for truly anyone in our region or even wider region that would like to be involved, I would absolutely love to have you on board. And thank you so much.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience? Bridget?
Yeah, I just wanted to say-
If you could come to the microphone, please, so Cat TV can pick you up and identify yourself again.
Bridget Eldred, Bennington. I wanted to say, I was very encouraged to hear you talking about the relationship with Bennington College. I think having a good relationship with Bennington College and Bennington proper will be very beneficial to all of our communities. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ahmed.
First off, very few people give me a hard time. Just want to make a note. I did want to turn us back a little bit for the process that brought NBOSS to the Riverwalk. You will recall that the BBC in the town worked very hard on reimagining the Riverwalk and doing the refurbishment that occurred there. And one of that reimagining was to bring art to the Riverwalk and to downtown. And so the BBC asked a question, would NBOSS come to Riverwalk? And the answer was yes. And that was a milestone moment for this town. And as Ahmed has so beautifully described, it is growing and growing, and the BBC hopes it will continue to participate in that process.
Thank you very much.
Erin Williams, Bennington, Vermont. Thank you for this wonderful presentation, it's super exciting. And thank you also for mentioning the murals that are on the Bennington County Multicultural Community Center. We're pretty proud of them, and as, our favorite way to refer to them is in fact one of Jax's projects. But for real, I would love to know as a staff person at a community organization, how and, what are you looking for specifically in a site to participate in this? And is there anything that the public should know about getting involved with you besides from reaching out directly? That information's super clear. But what are you looking for, and what's the best way to get involved?
Thank you. That was such a good question. So, how to get involved? Okay, it was, how to get involved, and one more thing. Yes. So basically, for the site process, I mean, I would say right now, in terms of like NBOSS sort of franchising, from NBOSS to NBOSS at the museum, to the Riverwalk, I would say it really has to do with, I mean, one, as of recently, me, honestly, full transparency, I'm trying to monetize this so it is sustainable and actually growing. So right now, there is a small fee for each site to be a part of NBOSS. And it's basically paying into the admin fee, the operating fee, and the grant fee. After all, like when it comes to a brand that is 28 years and growing, when an artist is applying to be a part of it and they're getting zero compensation, they care about what they're putting in their resume at that point. And for them to put something on their resume that says that they're a part of this show is the kind of artist cloud that they're looking for. One. Two, if it's a prominent attraction spot, if tourists are already going by the area, or if it's going to enrich an area. So I would say that the Riverwalk, being the project that it's been, you, like, you can't really create a whole new community traffic and a community destination without doing a couple of steps that has to do with the beautification first, and then, as you guys know, on Saturday, July 26th, having Arts Fest, which is going to be the first-ever event over there. So in here, like the Riverwalk project was, is much, much different from the museum and from North Bennington, because it's still an attraction, but it's honestly revamping and kind of rejuvenating a whole area in the downtown that wasn't kind of like accounted for, I would say. So between a fee, between like what are we actually bringing to it, between, to some extent, guaranteeing the foot traffic for the artists, because that's what they also care about. So I would say that a lot of factors come into place for a site to become a site, but I would like to say transparent, like very publicly, I would much rather if people, entities, entities, art institutions, whoever, reach out to work with us rather than contact our artists directly. That would be a really good way to support the show, is to actually treat it as an entity and not as the thing that happens, we put over 50 artists on display, and then out of nowhere, you have a museum there and a museum up there recruiting our artists for solo shows. So I mean, that is something that ends up hurting the show rather than supporting it when you're truly trying to create a site on your- it when you're truly trying to create a site on your own that is very irrelevant from what this thing actually is about. The, NBOSS, its, its brand, its clout, is that it's the whimsical show. As long as you can prove that your sculpture can stay up from June to November, you're most likely going to be in the show, whether you have the longest resume ever or no resume. So, so that, what kind of makes it unique and makes it special is that you end up having a much different diversity in perspective and expression. So yeah, these are, these are the, the primary things. And I, I would like to say one more thing that actually wasn't the presentation, but I forgot about. After doing some research, NBOSS is actually the, the eighth oldest sculpture show nationally, nationwide. This has been the eighth longest thing to sustain and continue because, because honestly, because of the North Bennington mentality. Because they care about it so much, they want to make sure it's that good and that it's always happening. This year was super challenging, whether it comes to Lake Perrin being the previous fiscal agent, when it comes to things related to insurance challenges, things related to the fact that Joe, the curator for 13 years, had his last year this year, things like starting the year thinking you have 2,500 in the bank, but you actually have none because it's already got spent. So, so there's, so there's like things, things like this. But again, it still happens because you have people truly, like Matthew Perry from the Vermont Arts Exchange, Sandra from the Highland Hall Garden, Joe himself, Joe McGovern, Art Whitman, one morning my tractor person fell through, Art was like, I'll come by and move sculptures around, Max Perry, and truly Mike McDonough and the BBC, Jamie and Alex and Martin at the museum. It really goes down to all of these individuals that just because they're like, no, this needs to happen. So it ends up happening.
All right. Anything else?
We've got one quick question.
Sarah?
I know we're past time. I have one quick question that popped up. You have the museum, you have North Bennington, and then we have the Riverwalk. You mentioned people reaching, or entities reaching out. What constitutes an entity?
Um, that is, that is a pretty interesting question. It could be, I mean, I'm speaking for something that isn't incorporated, it's not an organization, it's nothing. So I mean, right now, it's not registered to anything. So right now, I don't really have anything to say on what makes an organization and what makes a program. I would say it's truly like the, the, the solid proposal that proves that that is a site that will have the traffic that the artists and the community would like, the exposure, the, the co-branding and the aligned ship, because there's still brand integrity that has to do with this. And after all, this is something that is being put on the application. Hey, is your sculpture site specific? Are you creating the sculpture for any particular spot? In a list of priority, would you rather be in North Bennington, Bennington Museum, or Riverwalk? And then the artists get to share, because most of them are, are creating work that addresses the environment. So, so for me to introduce a fourth and a fifth and a sixth option, I have to make sure that it's going to be appealing to the artists and then later on, it's going to be something that I can fit into the promotion of the show as a whole. Mike McDonough might remember this whole conversation on, is it confusing to call it NBOSS at the Riverwalk? Is it confusing to call it NBOSS at the Bennington Museum when the NB is about North Bennington? But, but no, that's the origin, that's the origin story. The franchise and, and the brand is going to continue to evolve as NBOSS being a part of it, because that's the grassroots, that's the, the base of it. For anyone in town right now to start their own sculpture show, it's definitely going to take them way more than 7,000 to bring way less sculptures to their site. So they should reach out and work with me instead. Of course.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
That was a great presentation.
Thanks for your time.
I appreciate you. All right. Next up, boards and commissions. A couple of weeks ago, we announced that we were going to take applications for the remaining board and commission spots. So what we need to do this evening is schedule the interviews for those remaining open positions. As everybody saw in their packets, we got a total of eight new applicants. So I guess my first question is, do we want to divide this up into two meetings of four or do we want to do a marathon session of eight?
One.
Dan, were you waving at me? Okay.
Waiting your response.
All right. Clark?
No, one, I, I hark back to our charter review marathon session.
I think we could get eight people interviewed in one session.
I think we'd do that, too. I just, if anyone had strong feelings otherwise, it'd be interesting to hear it, but I think we could do it.
I do have a question.
Yep.
If that's appropriate.
Yeah, sure.
There's one applicant in here that I was very surprised to see because it's actually an incumbent. Does that, does that mean that person did not apply during normal, during open, during the first posting?
That's correct.
Okay. So thank you to that person. He knows who he is for stepping back up.
Yep.
I, I just wonder, I, so it's four positions, we have eight applicants, is that right?
Um, that's correct.
And so we have a number of applicants for the same position?
We do.
So if we do it all in one marathon meeting, it's not just the interview time, there might be some discussion?
I expect there will be discussion.
Yep.
But I think we can just plan in a long evening. Maybe we could get a snack.
We like snacks.
Yeah. Okay, so that brings us to when we want to, when we would like to schedule this. I, I would get it, personally prefer to get it done sooner than later so these folks can get to work. Does, does anyone have any, are there any dates, let's say next week, that people are not available?
I'm not.
You're not available next week at all?
I'm not.
I'm, I'm not available, let's say maybe next Wednesday through Friday.
I have a meeting Monday evening.
Tom, I don't know if you, this, if, I'm not sure that, that we're going to be able to get everybody's schedule out here in, in front of everybody, but I'm gone, I'm out of town the first week of August, starting at the end of next week. So, to see you're sooner rather than later, thinking was great.
Might be a challenge, though, from the sound of it.
But it might be sooner than we thought, sooner.
Right. So we might be talking this week.
That's what I'm afraid of. I'm, I'm optimistically afraid, yes.
Well, thanks to modern technology, we all have these flat things with our schedules on them.
This week would work for me. Next week, I couldn't do it on Tuesday, that's only the 22nd, I can't figure it out. Anytime this week and anytime next week other than Tuesday, I'm unavailable.
See. So how is everybody's either tomorrow or, well, we need to reach these people and be able to get them in.
We need to, we need to warn the meeting.
We need to warn the meeting. So we may be looking at August then, because we can't do a, all right. So what I will do then is, I think if we're going to be waiting until August, we could probably accomplish this easily enough over email. And that'll give us plenty of time to get the meeting warned and give these people opportunities to fit it into their schedules. So I would like to thank everyone that applied. It was nice to see such robust response to the second round of applications, as we had a robust response to the first round of applications. So I think if no one objects to that, I will send out an email either later tonight or tomorrow morning to everyone and we can compare schedules that way. Go ahead, Jim.
The only thing I would suggest is maybe before finalizing that, you should check with the applicants for the positions, too, because if it's in August, they maybe find that a lot of them are on taking vacation time. So I know that complicates things and it might mean that we have to meet on two separate nights, but that's-
If that's necessary, you know, we can work around that, but we have had success with folks, even though they were on vacation, you know, meeting with us over Zoom or, or something like that. I know Clark during the interviews was away and he was able to participate via Zoom. And I think Sarah zoomed into a meeting, because you weren't feeling well, as I recall. So, okay. I will send, I will start an email thread tomorrow or this evening.
So you don't need anything from this board tonight?
I, I was hoping that we could just all say, you know what, we're free next, next Thursday, but that, that didn't happen.
Then you realize there were seven of us.
Yeah. So, all right, thanks very much. But again, thanks to everyone who applied and you will look for something from us very shortly. All right. On then to the manager's report. Mr. Monks?
Yeah, I do have three action items this morning, not too taxing.
It's evening, Dan.
The first request is a request from Harmsbury to close Franklin Lane from Main Street to just pass the back Drysdale Building and Jay's Art Shop on August 2nd, from noon to 9:30 PM in connection with the 802 Day Tabloid Music Festival. And we would just need a motion from the board to approve that closure.
All right. I must recuse from this. So Jim?
Very good.
You're up.
Sure. So this is, this is related to the event that's happening that, that day, and this is one specific venue in that event that they're requesting, right? So is there any comment or concern about that before we make a motion? Clark?
I know earlier this year, there was some discussion about informing and local businesses that were going to be impacted by these changes. Has that all been resolved? Are we certain that people-
Well, this alleyway closure really doesn't have any impact on the businesses other than the one that's requesting it. Yeah. Cities would be closed at that time and, for the most part, and Harvest will be running the work of the event.
I think it was avocado pit, that little place right there, next to it and so forth. Any events closure, people across the street or whatever. That's all I know. In the past, there was some point of contention. I just wanted to make sure we don't repeat that.
I don't think we've ever had any concerns about the closure of that alley, because it doesn't lead, it's not a, it's not the only way to get to the parking lot.
No, I understand in general, not the alley, but the periphery.
The alley is being closed.
Okay. All right. As long as there's not any points of contention, that's, that's fine.
Is there, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I, I would move to approve this road closure.
Just what I was looking for. Thank you, Jackie. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second?
And for discussion, all the forums have been presented, met with the police and all of that stuff.
Because of the size of the event, it will be-
Okay.
The, the outdoor permit is approved?
They don't need an outdoor permit. They, what they need is this closure to, to reuse that.
Just, just for my own edification, there's not going to be drinking outside in the alley or anything?
Thank you.
So they're not, there's not going to be outside consumption with this event?
Um, if, well, if you're asking about the alcohol permits, then they would have to have their appropriate-
Right, that's definitely-
Yes, but that's not something that, that we would handle. They'd have to deal with that from the state. They'd have to have an outdoor consumption permit from the state of Vermont, which they already do have for the front of their section. I don't know what the rules are with regard to the adjacent. That would be a state matter.
Our obligation is road closure or not, right, Dan?
Yeah, road closure. We've done this several times in the past, Clark, so this is not a new request for this particular venue.
No, I was just saying, you know, one of the American Legion events, people wanted to go outside and drink beer in our parking lot and they were told, no, you don't have a permit to be outside drinking. And I didn't realize that was a state requirement or local requirement.
Whoever is the, whoever is the, especially with regard to private property, whoever is serving the alcohol has to have state, a license to, to have that, to sell alcohol at that event.
So the area of consumption is not a point of contention?
Well, you have to make sure that they, you have the appropriate approvals to do that, yes, but that's a state issue.
Okay. All right.
Anything else, maybe? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the, is equipment financing. Melissa's here to discuss the finer points, if anybody has any questions, but you'll see in the attached memo that we are requesting FY25 and FY26 financing for equipment approvals, purchases that were previously approved in FY25 and FY26 budgets. There are two leases, lease proposal A and lease proposal B. Lease proposal A is for three pickup trucks, a dump truck, and a Cascade breathable air system. And then lease proposal B is for a loader and an excavator. And both of the, just to reiterate, all of these purchases were approved in previous budgets, previously approved budgets and have already been purchased and most have already been delivered. And this is just for the financing of, of those purchases.
So just for clarity, we're looking for a motion eventually on both of these-
Yes. Lease, for lease proposal A, for the purchases discussed, and for lease proposal B for the purchases discussed. Both from, I should mention, these are from TD Equipment Finance. It's our, the primary financial institution that we work with.
Tom, should they be taken as two motions so that we can discuss them individually or?
That was about to be my question, Ed.
I'd like to, yeah, I think, I think yes.
Yeah, I think so, too. So let's go ahead and take them one at a time. So could I have a motion to approve lease approval, lease application A?
For purposes of discussion, so moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
All right, yes.
Clark?
Cascade breathable air system, what is that? I know trucks are and loaders are, but what is that?
I believe it's for the confined spaces, is that correct?
Melissa Courier, finance director. It is for, it is a permanently mounted piece of equipment at the fire station for them to refill their breathable air. I'm sorry, that's the best I can give you.
That's for the air packs?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Never would have guessed.
I didn't know that's why that, thank you.
Is, do you know, is this a replacement piece of equipment or is this something that they've been accomplishing through other means, you know, sending the tanks out and having them refilled and returned?
It is not a replace, it's not being replaced. It is something new that they've been dealing with in other means.
Jim?
Just maybe an obvious one. The lease amounts in these proposals consistent with the amount that were included in the budgets?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything from the few of you still in the public? All right, seeing nothing. All those in favor of lease A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we are unanimous. And if I could have a motion to accept lease B?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Clark? Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we are unanimous there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Melissa, we were way too easy on you.
I'm not too optimistic about the next item, given our, our previous discussion.
This one is going to take some time.
So we, you know, we, we do have a request from the animal control officer to hold a vicious dog hearing regarding an animal that has bitten people at least three times, once with serious, significant and serious injuries. So we, we do need to schedule a vicious dog hearing. That has to be scheduled, just like any other select board meeting, any other special select board meeting. The animal control officer has to be notified, the owner of the animal has to be notified as well as the folks. The person that was injured needs to be notified. So, given vacations, et cetera, it may be difficult to schedule something tonight, but I leave it to you folks. If you'd rather have Tom and I try to figure something out, I do know that ironically, the fire station is, is available most of the next couple of weeks. But we, now we know why, probably, right? Everybody's out of town. But we will have to, we will have to schedule something in fairly short order. But we will have to, we will have to schedule something in fairly short order, just because it is, it is important that we, that we do address this issue. As, as you know, it, it, the dog has injured someone significantly, seriously.
And we're holding this animal?
It will, it has been holding, it's being held now, but I don't know how much longer it will be held.
Okay. So this, this has in my mind more urgency.
Agreed.
Because it is an issue of public safety.
Particularly if we're running out of the time that this dog will be held and we're spending the money to hold it.
Right. So I'm.
I think, I mean, I, I agree with all that. I think it seems, as Dan said, that there are three parties that, outside of the select board, who have to be notified. And certainly the animal control officer has to be here, so maybe we should determine which are possible dates and then get back to the board.
Yeah, I think that's what I was going to say too, Jim. And, and I think in this case, while I prefer to have the whole board here, if we can have a quorum together, I think we need to move on this as quickly as possible. So if that's okay with everyone, if Dan, you would reach out to from, find out from staff what they're available, animal control officer, et cetera.
So would we be looking sometime next week? Would that be most?
I would, yeah, we want to get this done. If this dog is biting people, then.
Yes.
Something has to happen.
And, and balance that with giving enough notice to the, to the owner of the dog so that they can be here.
Can I just add to that by saying if there is an impending deadline that impacts that, the, the deadline being how long that animal can be held? If we're up against that, last time we had one of these, we saw that clock ahead of us, so we knew how we had to proceed. So Dan, if it's more urgent than we know, I think that's what we're, that's my point. If it's more.
Yeah, I think as long as we can schedule it next week, we'll be fine. I, I don't, I don't know how long we legally can hold the dog, so I can't answer that question, but if we.
I just wouldn't want that dog out on the street.
Yeah.
Before this board does something about this.
So we'll look to the 21st, 22nd, 23rd or 24th to try to get a meeting and I'll check with the animal control officer as well as try to reach out to the, to the owner. Okay.
That's a morbid topic, by the way.
Yeah.
I don't like that one.
You know, vicious dog hearings are never fun for those of us who have experienced them, so I will, I will reach out to the, to folks involved and suggest a tentative date or dates. Hopefully we can get a quorum to, to hold the hearing. That's it for action items. The informational topics actually ironically all have to do with bridges. Just a heads up that the Mount Anthony Road is closed in the vicinity of the bridge replacement on that road for the next, from July 14th to August 14th. So just a reminder for folks. And then the Main Street Bridge at the, at Beach Street on East Main Street will be limited to one lane or have lane restrictions for the next several months, so that will be ongoing. That's a Vtrans project. And I just note that the, the pedestrian bridge, the bike ped bridge on the Ninja Path across the Furnace Brook will be coming, will be constructed in the next few weeks. So that's underway. And that's all I have.
Upcoming agenda, I don't have any community requests.
Tom?
Yes.
Sorry, I have a question on the manager's report.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I just, I was really, I, I found some of the, the metrics that Ahmed presented during his presentation on digital marketing, really compelling. I see in the community development report, Vermont begins here on 802 marketing. Do we ever get similar sort of digital metrics from that group? Is that something I can see?
It's not something that I regularly deal with. I do know that Shannon and Jonah prepared, presented similar type data at the last time that they discussed their, their marketing efforts, so.
So Dan, if I could, I've been paying attention to this effort pretty significantly because it's just of interest to me. There's a monthly dashboard that is provided by the firm that we contract with. And if it doesn't already happen this way, I'll bet that dashboard ought to be uploaded at the same time that this report is submitted, because that's where the data is. I don't know if it is, but that's what we, what you are looking for.
Yeah, great, thank you. I'll go look for that.
And Jackie, what we can do is work with Jonah and Shannon, just make sure that that, if that's information you want to see regularly, we'll be happy to include it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Nancy?
We need an update on what the Old Bennington residents have decided with their roads and sidewalks.
We don't need an update.
I'm sorry?
We don't need an update.
I had.
It would have come before this board, there's nothing happening in Old Bennington.
I had an Old Bennington resident tell me they had a big meeting, a big discussion a couple of months ago, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so this board and the people of Bennington need to understand what they've been discussing and what they decided.
Let me make it clear, I'll make it clear for my colleagues. The Village of Old Bennington discussed with the legislators, legislators for the state whether or not that the road, the roads that are deeded to the village should revert back to the town, which is where they initially reside and where they automatically reside without that, that law being repealed. The village residents resoundly said they weren't interested in such a thing. So there is no here, there, there.
Okay.
There will be nothing happening with relating to the Village of Old Bennington roads.
I want to make sure that we don't find out that someone has changed a state law so the town and our taxes, our employees have to go up there and work. I thought, what I was told is there was a split among the citizens.
I just answered your question, Nancy. Yeah, and we should, we'll note that Ed is on the board in Old Bennington.
Well, yes, you're on the Board of Trustees for Old Bennington, correct?
I've just given you, yes, I am, and I've just given you.
Well, but you're kind of wearing two hats. You're on the select board. I just want to make sure the board and the people of Bennington are getting the same information that the people in Old Bennington got.
It's in every minute. If you wanted to read minutes for the Village of Old Bennington, Nancy, there, it's all there in the results and the outcome is posted for everyone to see, you and everyone else.
So when I was told that they're back to square one, what does that mean?
There is nothing there. Square one means that the Village of Old Bennington is responsible for its own roads.
Okay, so there's.
Let me finish. You asked a question, I'd like to answer it. The Village of Old Bennington has been responsible for its own roads since 1959.
Yes.
And it still is and will not change unless the Vermont Legislature decided, decides to repeal that law from 1959. And to our knowledge, legislators are not taking it up.
Okay, so if anyone hears, well, somebody from Bennington would have to contact them or Old Bennington, correct?
I don't know. If they had voted to have Bennington take their roads back over, we would have heard about it. It would have come before this board, as ours, as our town manager assured us several times.
Okay, so there's, well, I just want to make sure a state rep isn't up in Montpelier trying to get the law changed.
You take that up with your state rep, Nancy. I just told you the, the real deal.
Okay.
Sure. Okay.
I attended that meeting and it was, it was a close vote, but they voted to not turn over the roads to, to the town. It was a close, but they voted to not turn over the roads and to keep it separate.
Let me just, for clarity.
I'm still, I'm still.
Sarah, you said something wrong, so I want to help you out here, okay?
It's not helpful, but I'm still talking.
I mean, I'm, I am going to. Let's, let's hold on, hold on. Ed, Ed, let's let Sarah finish and then you'll give a second. It's false information. We'll, we'll correct it.
Yes, we will.
I believe the meetings were recorded, so if you want to.
They are.
If you want to go back and get those meetings and see those meetings, that would be helpful. I do believe it was close. I may have some misrecollection of that. There may have been some people that were not in attendance, but it turned out that they do not want to turn over the roads.
Okay.
Ed?
The Village of Old Bennington residents do not make the decision about whether or not roads are turned over to the town or remain in the village. The vote that Sarah is referring to was to pursue legislators, to pursue it and to bring it to this board, at which time I, of course, would have recused, although people question that. That's what the no vote was that night. I wanted to be very clear. Thank you.
All right.
I have a couple others. Community advisor. We need to invite the person in who says she is a community advisor for Bennington and Bennington County. We've never had a community advisor. Many of our citizens don't know what that is, so we need to have her come in to talk to us in the public, so people can ask her questions.
Are we still on manager's report or are you on to other business at this point?
I thought we were doing other business.
No, not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We still have, we still have to do upcoming agenda.
Right. So let's, let's.
Well, this, this is the agenda. We need to get her on an agenda.
Can, can I have some clarity? Who is she? What are we talking about?
Martha.
Who's Martha?
What's her last name?
Maggie? I, I'm not aware of.
She's appointed some sort of, I didn't know about this appointment, sorry. You're, you're out of left field here, so I'm a little confused. Right.
No, Ed, after I was elected, she contacted me and wanted to get together to talk. We got together, had a good discussion for an hour. I haven't heard back from her, but I did learn she is being paid to be a community organizer in Bennington.
Not by, not by the town though, Nancy. She is paid by the interfaith council.
I'd like to know who is paying her to be here.
She's paid by the interfaith council.
By who?
The interfaith council.
Okay. And for things she wants in Bennington and Bennington County, where was she beginning the funding?
She is advocating for certain items, but they should, they have not approached the town as far as I am aware for anything that would involve town money.
Okay, but again, if we have someone who was going to different officials and I didn't, never heard back from her. The public needs to understand what a community organizer is. We have not had one before.
We've had numerous community organizers in this town.
We don't have one now.
The town does not have one.
Yeah.
But there are, many organizations have community organizers.
Community of work, they are not hired by towns, they are not elected, they are not appointed.
They are hired by the organizations that they represent.
Can I comment on this? Because, yeah, Martha may be a community organizer, I guess she is, working with a specific organization in town. I dare say that there are probably dozens of people in town who advocate for different positions and in the, in the town of Bennington. And I don't think we've ever had a procedure or protocol whereby everyone who advocates or organizes on behalf of a community interest has to come to the select board and explain it, unless we are, the person, the organization responsible for them, and we are not.
But we have had such people approach us and ask to talk to the select board, and if they wish to do that, we generally hear them.
And both activities are their right as private citizens.
Right. But let's, let's, before we go too much farther into other business, let's do upcoming agenda, please. I don't have any, no one from outside the community, community at large has approached me for the next meeting. I do have a couple of requests in August. Dan, do you have anything specific for the next agenda?
I don't have anything specific, but we will have.
We'll come up with, there will be something.
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
And this, the first one, I don't know as though it needs to be or it can be at the next meeting because of the timeliness of it. But based on our recent listening session on the monument, I think it would be prudent for the board to consider taking an official position on the monument, probably in the form of a resolution. I think we need time for maybe one of us to work with town staff to draft something to be shared with the, the board. So I, I just think that's a process that ought to be, we ought to get that in motion. And the other thing is, I would like to see at the next meeting is a status of the force account application for the Ninja Trail, probably the so-called Ninja Trail portion of the Valumzak Valley Path. It's a, it's a really important project to get done and there's state grant funding there. And this is, getting this information into the state in a timely fashion is, I think, critical, both for moving the project forward and to make sure that the town is in a position to take advantage of the so-called force account work whereby we would not only not be responsible in that case for cash, for the local match, but we could also be compensated for some of the work that we do from the grant funds. And I just don't want this to get too far down the line and not get the information into the state and have the state tell us that, well, you know, it's going to take longer because we didn't get the information in in time.
I made notes, I saw Dan make notes.
Yes. I'll follow up on that.
Okay. Now into other business. Nancy, you said you have one other thing.
Are we going to have a public discussion prior to the River Walkway Park reopening or the Skateboard Park opening?
What would we discuss?
I'm sorry?
To discuss what?
Well, there were a lot of issues at the River Way, Walkway Park for years. I think it would be beneficial for us to make the public aware of what we will allow and what won't be tolerated. Lots of questions on the Skateboard Park. I've tried to get it on the agenda for a year and a half. There are really critical discussions we should be having prior to the park opening. But if nobody else wants to talk about it, that's fine.
If you want to talk, you know, in a little more detail about what in particular you think we could talk about, I'm happy to do that with you.
Okay.
Keeping in mind what our obligations and responsibilities are.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Sarah, anything?
Sure. Yeah, I think when we're voting every year about tax rate requirements and raise taxes, all of the fun stuff that everybody loves to talk about, loves to, being sarcastic here, loves to raise taxes. It's a hard vote for everybody to raise our taxes, but when we look at what we're voting for, we're looking at our highways, we're looking at our fire, they're all our, our volunteer fire departments. So to me, voting that down is something we're looking at, we're saying, we're not going to support our roads, we're not going to support our fire department. Yes, it's, it's very hard to say, yes, we're going to raise our taxes, but on the other side of that, saying no is saying we're not going to support our fire department. We don't want them to show up when we have a fire. And having Four Seasons here, it's saying, we don't want our roads to be decent. So just throwing that out there, I needed to get that out there so people know why I'm voting yes, to increase our taxes.
Jim? Jackie?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Clark?
Other business, Tom. Excuse me, other business, and I guess maybe I'm regressing here, combination of upcoming agenda and other business. I would like to have almost a standing invitation to our state refs to do what Will was so gracious to do most of this spring, to come in, give us legislative updates and the impact on, on our community or what we as a community need to do or communicate up to the people in Montpelier to move forward. So if we somehow establish some sort of a standing, open invitation, wherever, send them all a written letter and say that you're always welcome to come and we greatly appreciate you doing so, both the senators and the representatives, please.
Thank you. Ed?
I have nothing else.
All right. But we do have need for an executive session to discuss personnel and contracts. We will not be taking action coming out of those sessions. So could I please have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?